I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, tonight for roll call, I'm just gonna go ahead and read the list if you could just acknowledge your present. Um, I actually can't see the whole screen, so um, just Todd isn't here, I think, so uh, John Lombardi.
Present.
Tracy Marshall.
Present.
Frank Bay Rossi.
Present.
Mike Reeve Steck. Tracy Altman.
Present.
Ryan Davis.
Present.
Jake Amidon.
Present.
Sherry Sherbin.
Present.
Matt Murphy.
Present.
And Amber Wilkes, present. Um, I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
May I have a second? Um, is there any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Um, item number four of the presentation by Matt Sicles and John Lombardi concerning the guidance for fall sports.
Okay, thank you. Let me go ahead and share my screen. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to um, provide an update to the board and engage the board in discussion on the status of uh, fall sports um, for 2020. Um, so I'd just like to start. There we go. So, um, a lot has happened um, over the last week. Um, I believe it was the Monday or Tuesday prior to Labor Day, Governor Cuomo announced that he was authorizing fall interscholastic sports to begin on September 21st. Um, originally, he announced that low-risk and moderate-risk sports could practice and play, and that high-risk sports specifically would be cheerleading, football, and volleyball um, could practice only beginning on um, the 21st, and I'll, I'll update that as we go. Um, subsequently, at around eight o'clock on Friday night prior to Labor Day weekend, um, after taking time to respond to the governor's announcement, the New York State Public High School Athlet- Athletic Association, which governs interscholastic sports in New York, um, issued about a 50-page guidance document. Um, it includes guidelines for student athletes, coaches, parents, spectators, officials, and facilities. Um, its primary focus is on health and safety, and it draws extensively from guidance documents of the New York State Department of Health. Um, it includes important dates um, for fall sports, and general dates for winter and spring sports, and then some sports, specific guidelines and considerations. We'll be providing an overview of that guidance document tonight. Um, there's a lot of repetition in it, and a lot of, a lot of things appear in many different sections, which I, my best try to repeat. Um, it, it is clear, um, the governor has stated, and New York State Public High School Athletic Association has acknowledged, that it is still a local decision as to whether to resume or not resume um, fall sports, which sports, which levels, and other details. And really, there's, there's different layers to that decision-making that we'll get into. Um, the individual sections have decisions to make. Um, in our case, section five, uh, the leagues and the individual districts. Um, the update, which is hearing red, is that around eight o'clock last night, um, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association um, veered from its original guidance document and from the original um, authorization of the governor, and delayed high-risk sports to March 1st. Those would be competitive cheerleading, football, and boys' and girls' volleyball, and delayed the start of traditional spring sports April 19th. So, in effect, creating a fourth mini-season between our normal winter and spring season. So, that was a, a late development, um, and there's some changes that, um, that I've made in the slides as per. John, anything, if I'm leaving anything out, feel free to, to jump in. So, these are dates as laid out in the guidance documents. So, fall sports begin September 21st with a to-be-determined end date. Um, section five will determine the end date with uh, and the guidance is no more than 15 weeks. Um, they had previously canceled regional and state championships um, for the fall season back when they delayed the September 1st region. Um, October 12th marks the first date of the waiver of the seven-day rule. The seven-day rule is basically prohibits teams from practicing or competing or having any activity on seven consecutive days. Um, that will be in effect up until October 12th, but from October 12th on, once the student athletes would have had a chance to condition a little bit, um, that rule gets waived to fit in more competitions. Um, October 19th is the earliest date for competitions beyond the section or the league. So, what that means is, and, and that could change too. I don't know that we're guaranteed that they'll authorize it at that point, but they're really confining competition within sections and leagues um, for safety purposes. John, you've been part of meetings on, at the league and section levels, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Well, I'm, I'm on the section five committee as well for this, and part of section two is also because they realize that transportation might be an issue, and more games might need to be played on the weekend as well, so that's another reason that they're gonna waive that after a certain timeframe. And they've kind of made it so it's section five, I know the governor said it's by the reopening phases, but section five is such a big sec- or as far as the way it's broken up, it, it actually covers four of those, those phased openings that they have, so they got a wave by section for sports, because some leagues otherwise would go, half the league would be in like the southern tier, and the other half would be in the Finger Lakes, but to try to make sure that they keep them within that little area, they wanted to keep them, the leagues are actually closer together than if they were to go by some phase reopenings.
Thanks, John. Um, so winter sports tentatively will start November 30th. They pushed that back to allow more time for fall sport season to conclude. Um, it's a to-be-determined end date for winter sports, although with the announcement of uh, the March 1st date for high-risk sports, that might become more clear here soon. Um, but section five will determine the end date of winter sports, no more than 22 weeks, um, as of right now, but subject to change, uh, regional and state championships. The high-risk sports, again, this was a late development, have been postponed to March 1st. Spring sports pushed back to April 19th with a to-be-determined end date. Um, again, to, to create the window for that fourth season, um, cheerleading, football, and volleyball. So, that is the timeline that's presented to us at this point, subject to change on a lot of different levels, as things these days change quite frequently. Um, but that's the timeline as it currently exists.
And, and some of that end date for the spring season is also dependent on regents and what the, the state decides to do with the regents exams.
Correct, correct. Thanks, John. So, and I think it's important right up front um, to acknowledge, you know, that we as a school district, administration, educators, um, believe in the benefits of interscholastic sports. Um, we have many lists here, and certainly I'm sure there are others. Uh, we know that the interscholastic athletic program serves as an extension of the educational program and allows the teaching of very important life lessons in a state non-classroom setting, and, and we know many, you know, those of us who've been in education for many years know the value that athletics bring to our students. Um, we, we have data to back up the fact that it contributes better grades and attendance, lower dropout rates, fewer disciplinary issues, um, certainly fosters school pride and a sense of connection to school, which plays connected to that lower dropout rate, because we're still connected to the school, they're more likely uh, to stick with it and to do better academically, promotes the development of important soft skills, you know, from leadership cooperation, time management, et cetera. Um, certainly, and, and in these times, a pandemic certainly helps reduce student stress depression, build self-esteem, and foster positive social relationships, um, promotes health and fitness, and combats childhood obesity, and um, contributes to successful outcomes after high school, college, workforce, military, and in the community. So, um, as, as we enter into this thought process and discussion, I thought it was important um, right up front to acknowledge um, the importance we all see um, in the interscholastic athletic program. I'll certainly open, open it up to Mr. Lombardi or Mr. Bay Ross, if there's anything you'd like to add.
And it's, you know, it's things like that, those connections that, that students make, that years from, you know, 10 years down the road, I still have kids that I coach coming back up to me and say, "Coach, you know, you made a difference in my life," just like teachers, it's, it's those little things, those little connections that sometimes, it's those little things that hook them in to, to sticking with it and then making something of themselves as they go on and become, you know, members of our society and members of our community.
And, and I would, I would piggyback on, on that and say, you know, a lot of times for many of our students, this is the hook that gets them in, into their academics. They know that they need to keep their academics to play sports, you know, they need to keep their academics up. Um, so a lot of times, that, this is that springboard for them, um, that, that invests them in their academics. So it's, it's something that we obviously see the benefit to.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, go, getting into the guidance, so there, there's many sections, and again, I referenced, there's a lot of repetition in the document, there are pieces that show up over and over again, so I, I'll try to point out areas where, yep, that applies to everything. Um, but, so low- and moderate-risk sports, and this was determined by the uh, New York State Department of Health months ago for guidance document for sports recreation. Um, you know, they, they classify different sports as low, moderate, um, and high risk. Um, low- and moderate-risk sports may practice and play beginning September 21st, according to the governor and according to New York State Public High School Athletic Association. For us, this includes cross-country golf, soccer, boys' and girls', girls' swimming and diving, and girls' tennis. John, am I leaving anything out there?
Not, nothing, there's other things, but we don't offer the other things.
Right, right. There are some others in those categories that we don't offer. Um, there's practice requirement of 10 practices and no changes to the game or contest limits um, per sport. Uh, again, in red, this is a late change, those high-risk sports, cheerleading, football, and volleyball, which originally were cleared only to practice with their, with um, only incidental contact, have now been postponed to March 1st in hopes that circumstances will change, and they'll have more opportunities for um, competition by that date. But, of course, like so many things that we're dealing with right now, that'll be a wait-and-see proposition, I'm sure. So, the guidance document talks about different groups um, within the athletic program, so we'll start, you know, where it really matters, with our student athletes. Um, so there's some important pieces here. Um, first and foremost, and this is one that's caused a little bit of confusion and, and probably some controversy. Student athletes must maintain social distance of at least six feet, unless safety or the core activity, meaning practice or playing the sport, requires a shorter distance. So, they have to be six feet apart unless playing the sport requires them to be less than six feet apart, which is often going to be the case with maybe the exception of, of tennis. Um, if a shorter distance is required, they must wear an acceptable face cover, unless they're unable to tolerate a face covering for the physical activity. That is as specific as the guidance states, and we, it has been indicated to us that there's no intention or anticipation that that guidance will become more specific. Is that correct, John?
Yes, that is how it's stated, how it's written, and that's, nobody else is gonna go any further than that with, with that expectation.
So what that means is it does not currently state, nor do we expect that it'll state, that a medical exemption is required, but rather, the student athlete could declare and make the decision that they can't tolerate the mask while participating in a physical activity. I would expect that that would be a pretty frequent and common occurrence. Um, they must wear face coverings when not engaged in the competition or physical activities, when they're on the sidelines, um, and there's also social distancing requirements there as well. Um, they should notify the coach immediately if they're not feeling well, and there's, and this appears throughout the document, no hugging, high-fives, shaking hands, or fist bumps, so minimizing contact um, between individuals. For coaches, and, and you'll see the list sort of gets longer as you start to talk about people with responsibility um, for enforcing different expectations. So, coaches, which includes trainers and other individuals not directly engaged in the physical activity, they must ensure a social distance of at least six feet that is maintained among individuals at all times, unless the safety or core activity requires a shorter distance. They themselves have to abide by the six feet because they're not engaged in the physical activity. Now, if safety tending to an injured athlete requires them to, then, then of course, they tend to that athlete, but they'll be required to wear a face covering. So, the coaches, trainers must wear an acceptable face covering at all times. They are expected to set clear expectations for student athletes at the beginning, indicate guidelines to students, parents, and the clearing and compliance center. Again, ensure that there's no hugging, high-fives, shaking their, shaking hands, fist bumps. Um, they should consider conducting workouts in cohorts to limit exposure. So, you know, mini-groups, the team engaging in drills rather than the entire team interacting. Um, of course, that sort of goes away once you go into the competitive thing, depending on the sport. Um, they should keep accurate records of student athlete and staff attendance to assist with contact tracing. So, part of our reopening plan is we have to have a plan of how we're going to assist the local health department's contact tracing if there's a positive um, COVID case. And here, you know, student athletes come on campus um, for sports, we have to keep accurate records of that, um, in case we're called upon to verify who was present and who came into contact with who. Um, they also encourage us, or the coaches, to limit game day team and roster size for social distancing purposes. So, you know, you may have a team of 20, but maybe you only dress 14, or, you know, I'm just making up numbers depending upon the team, um, but limiting game day team sizes um, to help with social distancing, because some of the locations, it might be difficult to keep the kids six feet apart when they're not playing. Um, and then coaches themselves should bring and use their own water bottles. For parents and spectators, there would be a limit of no more than two spectators per player, so that's a cap. Um, districts could certainly go less than that if the circumstances warranted it, um, depending upon the, the site. Um, spectators must maintain six feet of physical distance between individuals and/or family or household units. So, if you have a family of parent and siblings watching a student athlete, they could be closer than six feet, but they'd have to be as a group six feet apart from the next individual or family. Um, spectators must wear acceptable face coverings um, and be six feet apart. The only exceptions to that are if they're the under, under the age of two or medically unable to tolerate the face covering. Um, parents are encouraged to provide and label their student athletes' personal items and to disinfect their student athletes' personal equipment after each game or practice. Um, John, I just wanna pause, see if there's anything you wanna add to any of this so far?
No, it's, this, you know, some of this is pretty straightforward, and I think you'll get down when we get to the sports-specific stuff.
Uh, there's a couple of teams that actually, in the guidance, tells you how many you should take to like an away meet,
but I think we'll get there when we get more sports.
Right. So, for the officials, and this is really important, this first bullet, there, it states it very clearly, exactly like this. They are responsible for game management, not to include monitoring sideline activities such as social distancing, face coverings, hand washing, symptoms of student athletes, et cetera. Monitoring, monitoring sideline activities is the responsibility of the district. And that seems like common sense, but it's a pretty important um, statement to make to ensure that you have officials available, because um, having been a softball official in the past, if I was responsible um, in a situation like this for what happened on the sidelines, on top of what hap- is happening on the field, um, I may have thought twice about doing it, so um, I think that was an important decision. Um, the officials should communicate with the host school in advance regarding procedures and the size of changing areas, um, so they can, they can ensure social distancing themselves. They should request hand sanitizer be available at the scores table. They should arrive at the host site fully dressed in their uniform. Um, must complete a health screening, so a health screening that will be required of our students and staff, our officials would have to complete that as well in advance of coming on campus, including a temperature check. Um, they must wear a face covering and maintain social distancing to the extent possible. And in individual sports, I didn't outline all of the detailed differences for sports, but there, there are specific instructions for different types of pre-game meetings, interactions between officials, coaches, players, and how those should be conducted to maintain social distancing. Um, school administrators, there's gonna be a couple of slides on this. Um, so there's a lot of expectation on the, the school district to ensure some things. Um, so the individual districts have the authority and autonomy to administer their athletic programs as they deem appropriate. They can write from the guidance document. Um, individual districts make determinations regarding modified junior varsity and varsity teams. So, you know, based upon resources, limitations, or any other factors, individual districts can decide which all or if any levels of these sports to offer. Um, should consider, districts should consider scheduling practices, games, and competitions to accommodate bus transportation availability. This would most certainly become a necessity, and we'll get into this. Examples are 5:30 start times, you know, we'll talk about, you know, how we're transporting in-person um, students, and the time that takes, the impact on the availability of buses, and as John referenced earlier, even encourage or entertain the possibility of Saturday or Sunday competitions. And that's why they lift that seven-day rule um, on October 12th. Um, again, should limit game day team and roster sizes. This one I found a little surprising, um, that merged and combined teams are still permitted with league and section approval, and we do engage in these partnerships with local districts. You know, sometimes we don't have enough students for a particular sport on our own team, but we'll partner and send our student athletes to another school and vice versa, and that is still allowed with league and section approval. Um, must communicate with the host school prior to competition to discuss plans. So when we're, before we send a, a team to another school, there's a lot of communication and collaboration that has to happen. Um, has to follow the, we have to follow the host school's policies and guidelines, and visiting teams have to abide by ours, and there could be differences um, team, you know, school to school. Um, must ensure that teams, go ahead, John.
Yeah, I mean, we're lucky that our Wayne Finger Lakes, we're usually a pretty, a pretty good group of athletic directors. We work pretty well together. We've already had, set up a bunch of these Zoom meetings to start to discuss some of this stuff, to try to make sure that we're all on the same page, because we don't want one school district to do something a little bit different than the other. Obviously, we're gonna follow the guidelines, but we're gonna try to, as much as we possibly can, be on the same page so parents know what to expect when they get to a different host site.
Right. You know, for example, if different schools were to try to enforce different rules around face coverings during the competition, that, that would cause quite a bit of conflict and consternation um, within the leagues. Um, and let's, uh, must en- again, must ensure that teams bring their own medical supplies and emergency action plans. That's referenced a couple of times in the document, but I'm not sure that I saw it spelled out, so hopefully there's more guidance there. Uh, and ensure, should ensure that student athletes bring extra clothing in case locker room access is limited or not available. And basically, when, when visiting another school, we should really assume that locker rooms won't be available. Um, there are, we have to identify an administrative contact, John Lombardi, for all hosted events. Um, we're encouraged to hold, you, you know, if we have sports, encouraged to hold senior games at the beginning of the season, you know, with the understanding that, you know, we're still in a pandemic and si- the situation is constantly evolving, and if we think back, you know, to, to last year, you know, um, you, you wanna front-load those special commemorative games to get them in in case some circumstance were to change and the season were canceled, so um, that's an important point. Um, again, communication with the visiting schools, um, determining how game day paperwork will be handled, and really encouraging electronic paperwork to cut down on the exchange materials, uh, make sure that facilities are, your game sites are sanitized, and hand sanitizer and disposable masks are readily, readily available for the visiting team before they arrive, as well as your own team. Make frequent announcements prior to and during competitions regarding face coverings, social distancing, and ensure the cleaning and disinfecting of frequently touched surfaces, including the game balls. And there's specific guidelines for that. The health screenings. The health screenings, the district must implement mandatory health screenings, including temperature checks for students, faculty, staff, contractors, meaning the officials, vendors, and visitors. However, and this is where there's a little bit of contradiction and confusion, the district cannot mandate that patrons or spectators complete a health screening or provide contact information, but may encourage them to do so. And as you think about the potential for visiting spectators, that could be a difficulty to, to enforce that. Remote health screenings using an electronic form are strongly advised. There's guidelines for confirmed cases. The district must establish protocols and procedures in consultation with the local health department for determining when individuals who are screened positive for COVID-19 can return to the in-person school environment. That's true for learning and for athletics. And then once a student athlete is cleared for participation following a positive COVID-19 diagnosis, the decisions regarding the reasonable amount of practice and playing time for that student athlete are to be made on an individual basis in consultation with the school physician. And then if the school was closed for in-person instruction due to an increase in COVID-19 cases, that's spelled out very clearly, then school-sponsored sports have to be suspended until in-person education. This restriction does not apply to schools that are conducting only remote instruction from the school. So if you're in a hybrid model and you moved to remote instruction because of confirmed COVID-19 cases, then sports have to be suspended. If you move from hybrid model to 100% remote for some other reason that's not related to COVID-19 cases, then it's not necessarily required to suspend sports. John?
Or if, you know, if the students that have already picked full remote, they can also still participate in athletics.
Right, yeah, I, I apologize for not including that. That was actually a separate memo that came out from the state education department. Actually, before the Public High School Athletic Association guidance came out. Basically, any student who is enrolled in the school and otherwise meets the criteria to participate in athletics can participate in school athletics regardless of what model of learning they're in. So in-person, hybrid, or remote, that doesn't matter. They're enrolled in the school. If they otherwise meet the age and other criteria, then they're eligible. General considerations, emphasis, and this is, you know, across sports, the district should emphasize the importance of hand washing, hand sanitizer. Ensure that facilities have been properly sanitized, have hand sanitizer, disposable masks available, that we're cleaning and disinfecting frequently touched surfaces, equipment, including the balls and other equipment. Social distancing guidelines for sports and recreation, this is really important because this has caused a lot of confusion. And I think even for New York State Public High School, it's created some confusion. The social distancing guidelines for sports and recreation is six feet. And even that, only, you know, unless they have to be closer due to safety or to play the game. That's different from the guidelines for phys ed classes where it's 12 feet for aerobic activity. So that is a discrepancy that a lot of people have some confusion on. No clear explanation has been provided, you know, with the low and moderate risk sports, there does tend to be, it does tend to be outdoors, although not all of them. And the students, athletes are less likely to be stationary, you know, near each other for extended periods of time. So that may factor into it. But that's clearly caused some confusion. There's to be social distancing during the national anthem. Districts must have a hydration plan to safely provide water to student athletes, coaches, and officials, including coordination with visiting teams. So if you think about, you know, traditional ways of keeping kids hydrated during games, you know, paper cups, shared, you know, water coolers, we'll, we'll have to have a different plan from that. Only essential personnel are allowed at the practice or competition site. And any media have to coordinate with school administrators. Again, teams should consider making students responsible for their own supplies. Student athletes should not share clothing and should dress appropriately. Towels and clothing should be washed. Mouth guards. Student athletes are encouraged to keep mouth guards in their mouths throughout the practice or competition. If that's not possible, then proper disinfection of the mouth guard should be performed prior to putting it back in the mouth and hands should be washed, sanitized before and after doing so. That's as specific as it gets. John, I don't know if you want to shed any light on that, if that's a topic of conversation at a league level?
As I, there was, we had our town hall meeting earlier today, so I missed the meeting that they were going over some best practices. And that was one of the topics on there. So I'll get that information around when I get the summary notes of that meeting.
Right. So, you know, that could certainly, I could foresee that sort of stalling gameplay, that process. Student athletes should be advised to bring and use their own water bottles and they're encouraged to shower at home as quickly as possible after practice. Just trying to give you a sense of the, the magnitude and weight of these, of these guidelines. These are specific to facilities and certainly John and Mike, if you'd like to chime in at any time. For indoor sports and recreation, for us, the pool area. Capacity is limited to no more than 50% of the maximum capacity as listed on the certificate of occupancy. And that includes everybody. That includes employees, athletes, and spectators. And it still has the cap of two spectators per athlete. So if we're under 50%, that doesn't mean people can bring more than two spectators per athlete. So both are in effect, but there could be some settings either here or at a, an away site where they may have to say no spectators because they're not able to maintain the capacity. May facilitate social distancing with markings and signage. Should put measures in place to reduce bidirectional foot traffic. Should designate separate entrances and exits to the extent possible or practical. Should rearrange waiting areas to maximize social distancing. This includes sidewalks, parking areas. Ensure that cashiers or ticket takers wear face coverings and transactions should be contactless if possible. Now, I know this isn't necessarily something that applies here, but there have been ideas out there about using ticket takers to control spectator sizes. But if you're exchanging tickets, they're really encouraging you not to do that. So that's why I included that in there. Ensure individuals not participating in the sport. So the coaches, spectators, practice is social distancing unless physical barriers present. And ensure employees wear face coverings when interacting with athletes, spectators, or other employees regardless of. Have to adhere to CDC and DOH guidelines on hygiene, cleaning, and disinfecting, including signage and cleaning logs. Provide hand hygiene stations, promote, have signage indicating that soiled hands should be washed, that hand sanitizer isn't enough, hands are disinfected. Provide appropriate cleaning and disinfecting supplies for shared and frequently touched surfaces. Conduct regular cleaning and disinfecting of each site, frequent cleaning of high-risk areas. Regular cleaning and disinfecting of restrooms and try to the extent possible to ensure distancing rules to reduce restroom capacity. Mike, anything you want to add at this point or wait until later in the presentation?
I think I'm good for now.
Okay.
The only thing I have to add, I mean, the, our areas of concern at our home events would be the pool for that 50% capacity. And just making sure the, the restrooms, different restrooms that we would have, those are the two areas of capacity concern for me.
Thank you. So here are some, some sports specific, and, and there's a lot more here. And I let you look at this, but John, I don't know if you want to reference some of these. I identify three to one whether it's classified as low risk or moderate risk. But these are just some of the, the modifications for cross-country.
I know there was, I, there's always going to be some questions about who is going to go to away meets and things like that. Cross-country is probably going to be, you'll have probably like a race off or something like that to determine that. But that will be determined when we get there. Those are, that's the biggest one on there because technically you, you need seven people in a cross-country meet to score. So they're, you know, letting you bring a few extra than that seven. And just, just we'll have to make sure that we really go through our course and make sure that we meet some of those guidelines and widen out some of those areas.
Golf, also low risk, really abiding by the course policies wherever they're playing, whether it's home or away. Trying to limit or eliminate the exchange of materials or equipment between athletes. John, anything you want to add there? Are we good?
That one's just, that's pretty, that's going to probably be the easiest one to abide by all the, the guidelines and protocols that are in place.
Right. Soccer is classified as moderate risk. No linear bench area and adjust backwards from the touchline instead. This, this could be interesting and, and could really impact space for spectators because the student athletes on the bench are really going to have to spread out and be six feet apart. So that will be a little bit of a challenge. Substitutes, you know, six feet and apply hand sanitizer before entering the game. A variety of things, mandatory two-minute hydration or mask break at the 20-minute mark. That'll be, we, we expect that to be a little bit flexible depending upon how things play out with the players wearing masks. And dropped ball is suspended and replaced by indirect kick. So really trying to limit hand contact. Anything, John?
No, it just, that's going to be a, a rule that kids are going to have to get used to because a lot of times they try to get that quick change of direction. So that's something they'll have to work on.
Right. There's a lot in the swimming and diving that I just simply didn't understand. So John, if you want to just cover some of the big ones here?
Yeah, I, again, it's when they're out of the water, mainly doing some of their dry land things or they have to still try to wear a mask whenever possible. There, they really focus on some of those cohorts, making sure that you keep your teams in little pods. You have to measure out as far as social dist, as far as you work with your pods, assign your lane lines to certain kids and just make sure you keep them together that way to limit the exposure. Just some of that stuff is going to take a little bit longer to do because warmups, we're going to have to have extended warmup times for, to make sure that we can accommodate both home and away teams. And, you know, the locker rooms are going to be an issue too as well because a lot of the pools don't have huge locker rooms. And, but with swimming, you, you might, you're, you need swimming, you're going to need the locker rooms a little bit more. So because you're jumping in and out of the pool and things like that, so.
And tennis, again, just trying to minimize, you know, touching of the equipment with hands or, or handing equipment between people. Again, on the lower risk side, certainly, you know, probably the most social distancing of any of the sports. I mean, you want to add there, John?
No, the, the, the ones that have been open the longest over the summer are pretty easy to kind of see why they're the lower risk sports.
Absolutely. Okay, so as we get into, you know, closer to the board discussion and sort of talking this out, we've identified some of the obstacles and concerns that would have to be balanced against benefits and would have to be managed and overcome for us to implement a fall season. So, you know, one again is that lack of clarity regarding tolerance of a face covering during physical activity. And, and I, I put that as an obstacle and concern just because different people, different student athletes, different parents are going to have different feelings about that. And we would expect the majority of student athletes, I think, to not be able to tolerate, you know, a face covering for certain sports. Certainly, you know, soccer, cross-country, things like that. And, and that might cause, you might see differences between schools. You might see some conflict and disagreement between parents. Just because as, as people have different levels of concern about the coronavirus, student athletes not being required to wear the face covering could cause some concern. Another, the, the next two are significantly related to transportation. So remote students getting to campus for practices and competitions, whether they're home or away. So with all of our aged, grade level appropriate student athletes in remote learning, and even if they were in a hybrid model, they'd be remote, you know, three out of five days. Is the challenge of those students getting to campus. State Ed has clarified in the same memo where they clarified eligibility for sports. They also clarified that districts are not required to transport students from home to school specifically for sports. And quite honestly, the, our district would lack the capacity to do so because you'd be talking about attempting to get, you know, bus student athletes from their homes to school at exactly the same time that we're getting our on-campus students home from school. So that would be pretty much an impossible barrier to overcome. Another transportation one, and, and John and Tracy can chime in on this. Transportation to competitions. Because of the length of time it takes, it's going to take to transport our, our kids home, our bus availability is going to be later in the day. So it could be challenging to schedule three levels of competition for all the different sports. And it would definitely increase the likelihood of later start times of competitions scheduled on Saturdays and Sundays once that seven day rule is relaxed. We do have the Wednesdays. John, Tracy, do you want to talk about that or any other issues related to transportation?
I mean, as a league, we talked about that because a lot of the school districts in the area are doing the same type of hybrid where they're going Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays are off, and then Thursday, Friday. So we were hopeful, hopeful that if we try to schedule some of those games on a Wednesday too, that would help alleviate some of those issues with transportation. And then again, that we'd have to look at Saturdays and Sundays. And then we'd have to start to look around as far as what districts have lights for different events that we could move some of those events to later in the evening as well to accommodate students getting home from school.
You know, on, on Monday, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, you know, most of our buses probably wouldn't be available to leave for a contest until 4:25 to 4:45, which could cause significant scheduling challenges. There's also some team sizes that could require, because of the social distancing requirements on buses, we could need two buses to transport a team, you know, for one contest. So something to keep in mind there as well. Anything, anyone else wants to add on transportation?
Yeah, no, man, I think you covered it pretty well. So given the rerouting of the runs to accommodate for smaller busloads, as you mentioned, the, the buses will be back at a later time. And then, of course, we have to clean and disinfect the buses in between runs. So that adds about 15 minutes in between that, that returning time and the ability to board students, athletes for transportation to contests. In addition, you know, mentioning the additional buses for transporting so we can maintain social distancing with the equipment is, is another obstacle we're looking at. But I think, you know, as John mentioned, a lot of districts are. obstacle we're looking at. But I think, you know, as John mentioned, a lot of districts are in the same situation. They're looking at ways to manage the time for the start time for the contests and maybe Wednesdays. And I know we have the staff available, the drivers want to drive the student athletes. So we have the, the manpower, we just need the timing to work out for us.
Thank you. Other obstacles concerned is, you know, and this is specific to some sites more than others, but adequate space to accommodate social distancing for spectators. Again, specific to the site. You know, soccer fields, you know, we probably have to remove bleachers or cordon them off. A lot of sideline space is going to be consumed by the social distance teams and substitutes. So that could be a, a challenge. Bandaging the conduct, whether it's done by administrators or chaperones, managing the, the conduct of spectators could be a challenge in terms of enforcing face covering, social distancing. Especially well, for both home and visiting spectators, I suppose that could be a challenge. Availability of concession stands, I think is hard to imagine that happening, given the, the current situation, but that might cause a concern for some. Not be able to have concession stands. And then, you know, there's the impact of additional cleaning and disinfecting on our school staffing who are already going to be stretched pretty thin in terms of cleaning and disinfecting for our students on campus, you know, our school buildings for normal cleaning and then costs associated with additional cleaning, disinfecting supplies, PPE and, and other things. So sure, there's others. Open it up to any of the, the team. If, if I've left anything out, if there's anything there that you'd like to comment or elaborate on. Certainly will all be available for questions here as we engage in discussion. So the next steps, and, and these are deliberately not numbered. These are, these are not sequential because they're, they're all kind of happening on their own, but they depend upon each other at the same time. So it's this very fluid triangle. Section five has decisions that they have to make and they're, they're having ongoing meetings. And they're pushing districts to make decisions as soon as possible, but districts were pushing back to say, well, we need time to engage with our boards of education and study this and look at our, our capacity before we can give an answer. But certainly by early next week, section five is going to be looking for pretty public and firm commitments for districts one way or the other. Leagues have decisions to make and of course, we as an individual school district have our own decisions to make. We do have another special board meeting scheduled for Monday, the fourteenth at six thirty to wrap up any discussion that begins tonight and to take any formal action one way or the other with regard to fall sports. So we're on a timeline to hopefully make a decision by Monday night and then be able to communicate that out to the section. And then questions and discussion. So unless anybody feels the need to have the PowerPoint up, I, I think I'll stop sharing my screen unless does anybody want me to keep it up so I can reference back to it? All good? All right. So that's the overview of the guidance and relatively thorough explanation of the situation at hand and the decision that has to be made. Ultimately, you know, the board will have to take action to either authorize fall sports for the coming season or not, or, you know, and that authorization could come in with, with varying levels of restrictions because there's decisions that have to be made, not just about sports in general, but about, you know, modified junior varsity and varsity level play. So that's our presentation. We're available for questions. Amber, I turn it back over to you.
Okay, um, why don't we go ahead and open this up for board discussion? Does anybody have any questions, comments? I have a zillion, but I'll wait and see.
What I'm wondering is what's the cost? Do we have a breakdown of what the cost would be?
We do not have a, a firm cost at this point because we're still processing the guidance, but I'll open that up to, to anybody here.
You mean as far as like the extra cost that would, that would be above and beyond the normal operating?
No, I would include that, what it usually is as well. And what, you know, is above and beyond.
Right. So once we decide what direction we're going to take and what sports we'll be having and how many contests there are, there's certainly, I can put together some figures for the board on what that total cost would be. We obviously budget for the sports. We won't be running all the sports. So we're certainly be running under budget in some of the areas that could help offset a little bit of the extra cleaning and manpower that might be needed to get us to the contest or, you know, what have you, whatever we need in terms of having supervision at the, at the events. So if there's something that you're interested in having, if I could just get a rough idea of maybe what the direction we're going, I could put something together.
And yeah, thank you, Tracy. And I would expect, you know, the cleaning and disinfecting requirements and then impact on transportation could be two areas that drive up costs. You know, while we maintain our athletic sites, many of them, especially our outdoor sites have not traditionally required this level of cleaning or certainly disinfecting. So the supplies necessary to accomplish that would certainly be in addition. And you know, depending upon whether we get into Saturday and Sunday, more Saturday and Sunday contests, that could impact transportation costs. And if we need more than one bus to transport a single team to a contest because of social distancing on the bus, then that would drive up costs as well. And then, you know, there's the cost of time as well. So and, and Mike can speak to this, you know, we're really, until we have students on campus on, on Monday, you know, we really don't know how some of our cleaning, how long some of our cleaning procedures are going to take and how much of our staff it's going to consume. That's why we have refrained from declaring a timeline for bringing more grade levels back on campus. We want to wait and see how long these things take. So we would then have to factor in the, the cleaning time of these athletic sites into that process as well. And, and Mike, if there's anything you want to add to that?
We're already starting to see additional cleaning, cleaning times, just having BOSI's back for the last two days. I just had some discussion with the night staff before this meeting and they have some concerns with that. They, they're not sure how they're going to be able to get everything done that they would, they're going to have to do now with the additional disinfecting and and it's the same thing with day crews and today's shift as well with additional bathroom cleaning. Everything, there's just a lot more to do. So it'll be interesting to see how it goes up, you know, Monday, when we get more of our students back and see how things truly do progress and how we have to adjust to make it, make it work.
So I guess kind of along the, the, the financial lines and is, is the, is there an attempt to try to keep the same number, number of contests? So like will cross country try to keep all the same league contests that they would have in soccer would have all the same, the same number of contests? Or is there a potential fewer for each sport?
Most likely though, the, because the season's condensed and moving, pushing the season back as well, it's also dependent on the weather. Probably stopped, like normally the regular season would stop about October twenty-fourth, somewhere around those lines. We're going to try to push it back maybe a couple more weeks into the, maybe early November. But so, but there will be less games. So probably like say sixteen is normally a soccer season. And maybe it'll get cut down to eleven or twelve, just depending on how many we can, we can put in there. You know, some of it's going to depend on, you know, how many teams are in our league or who's available to play as well. Cause there's going to be some schools that maybe if they opt not to, then they would, they would leave a gap in our schedule as well. But I would, I would say probably at least 20% less games per, per season, just because of the cutting off about two or three weeks of what they would normally have.
And that would probably vary significantly by level too. I, I would think that you might see more schools approve varsity sports and fewer schools potentially approve modified sports, which could create more gaps in the schedule and lead to fewer contests. You know, other things to keep in mind too, you, you think about a sport like golf. Gosh, I mean, they'd already have several matches already completed at this point and they're going to run out of daylight as, as we go deeper. So that, that could impact the number of contests and then, you know, depending upon the number of school who have lighted facilities could impact games as well.
And cross country meets are often, there is no dual meet anymore for cross country. It's usually four or five schools. Is, is there considerations that like that will go back to dual meets to keep crowds and numbers down? Or are they still looking to be?
The consideration they put into that was that they're cutting down on the maximum of four schools are allowed. And you can only bring 12 participants where before some schools would bring their varsity seven, and then there would be a B meet and they'd run the other kids, you know, JV group and stuff, and a second wave and things like that where this time they're just going to cut it down and and, and they're also going to work on staggering it. So start, start times would be different for groups. Doing it that way to try to cut down on the number of participants at a location.
So I, I'm, I'm feeling a little concerned that the cleaning staff is already feeling concerned and we have no idea what Monday is going to hold, but it also sounds to me that we're kind of make, trying to make a decision by Monday, if I'm understanding this correctly. So is the section waiting to see how many schools are going to participate? And are there schools now that you know of that have chosen not to do that? Or is this just all kind of happening at once?
All at once. Section five has put out a survey where they would really like an answer from schools by tomorrow. All of us that I know of have pushed back on that and said, that's not happening. It can't, you know, we're just starting to, you know, we, we've just gotten the guidance and had a chance to digest it. We had to schedule meetings with our boards to discuss it. We just, that's just not going to happen. So it, it's, it's just a difficult situation because, you know, the governor announced, it was around, what, September first-ish, that sports could start on September twenty-first and we got the guidance from Public High School on late, late eight o'clock on a Friday night on September fourth. And, you know, it's just, there's a lot to be decided in a very short period of time. Yes, it's all happening simultaneously.
So potentially schools in our section or league or whatever, I mean, could say yes, could say no. But at the end of the day, section five could say after knowing who wants to participate and who not may not even be able to go forward. I mean, are they?
I would highly doubt that that would occur. I, I would, I would expect that there will be sports played in section five this fall. By all schools, probably not. John, you disagree with me?
The ones that are really up in the air right now is the Rochester City School District. They're, that league is really up in the air about what they're going to do because they, they rely on the public transportation to get their kids in and out of school. And there, there's just a lot of moving parts in there. So they're really hesitant about moving forward. So they're still on the fence there, but they're looking at other options up there. And then there's some private schools that have opted to not do sports at all.
So like if I, if I'm talking to you, John, like how feasible do you see these guidelines as being more of a positive than a negative for people?
I can see the varsity and the JV older levels. I'm, I'm personally concerned about the modified level just because they, it's going to be harder for them to get back on campus because they don't drive. If the varsity kids could find rides or get ride, that they can drive themselves. The modified group is what, and I'm not, and there's other schools like, I'm not, I don't want to throw any names out there right now because we're live and I'll let them talk about their own stuff to their own districts, but there's other districts out there that are concerned a, about the younger kids as well.
I would share that concern, John. I, I got a question kind of leading towards that also. Buses aside, how do you see the schedule? And this is more specific to soccer, I guess, because that's the one where you're, you're racing against the daylight. And how, how can you see that scheduling the practices out for boys and girls soccer, if we were to even try to think about every level? How's, I mean, how's that going to work with the cleaning of the building as well?
Yeah, I mean, we're outside for soccer, we would probably not, we'd have them just like in youth sports when they would come ready to go. That would be a way to help cut back on, give the cleaning area, cleaning some, a break on that if we didn't use the building and we came ready to go for practice and they just got picked up and went home right after practice to help alleviate some of that.
But your practices in the past were, well, under normal circumstances, we're starting at three o'clock or three fifteen.
And I, I put feelers out to my coaches already to talk to, talk to them about saying that, you know, this is a different timeframe. We might have to look at pushing those practices back at a later time. We might not be able to practice as long as you used to practice because it is getting darker at an earlier point. But if we could possibly start at five or five fifteen and, and end around six thirty, that would be a, an opportunity for that. That there is going to be an issue. Is, are you going to have issues finding a coach that, that wants to coach from five to six thirty? But I'm, I'm sure we could do that. Most of my coaches responded back and, and they're, they're up for it. They want to do what's best for our kids. They want to get everybody back in the, in the swing of things if we possibly can. Obviously they want to do it safely. That, you know, everybody has a little bit of those concerns. How are we going to do this and make sure that we're keeping everybody safe at the same time that we return?
Well, I guess the reason asking is because you're, you're modified. There'd be no way you could practice before probably five thirty anyway, if, if we were to go down that road. So is it possible to do JV or varsity practice prior to that? Because the, the field is going to, I mean, that's going to be the issue, right? If, if trying to jam six teams on the three fields all at the same time, it's just not going to work.
Yeah. And that's, and that's kind of what we were talking about. We'd have the, the older kids go earlier because they would more likely be able to get back here at that time. And then stagger the, the younger kids later if possible. It's, you know, it's still a, a moving target that we're trying to work at, but you know, we're obviously trying to do what we can for kids that want to get back and, and participate.
Cause I guess my, what I'm thinking is the nice part about modified is that it's, it's still kind of the bridge between developmental and your JV and varsity. So you're not, you're not so much worried about getting 12 games into a modified season. If you had to throw, you know, a modified season together and get a half dozen games on a Saturday or whatever, then you at least give it a fighting chance. But
And that's, and that's probably going to be, because a modified season normally is 12 games. It's less than what a varsity season would be. So even there, you're going to be probably down to like maybe eight games.
Cutting it way back, but at least giving them something. But the, the onus is really going to be on the parents at that, at that level, right? Practices and games. We're not talking about buses for them because our buses are going to be used at, at a JV and varsity level.
We would still have to transport for games, for games, my understanding.
Also to the question, if, if we're, if we're running a varsity soccer game and not starting it till five thirty on October the eighth, are we talking about using the football field at that point in time to be able to light it? It doesn't be realistic. It's not going to be dark. I mean, it's going to be dark before we get the season.
Yeah. And that's, and honestly, we might have to look at trying to front load our home games early. And maybe be on the road more at the end, possible. But that, that's definitely a concern. And I'm, and I don't know if, honestly, I don't know if our football field is wide enough to fit a regulation soccer field on it. But that, that's definitely a concern and I'm, and I don't know if, honestly, I don't know if our football field is wide enough to fit a regulation soccer field on it.
There, there, you know, that might be a gift that we have to, to make, but obviously the league and the section would have to be involved in that.
We'd have to look at the dimensions of the. Of the, of the field down there.
Kids are playing at a foosball table at this point, I'm sure.
So, so just to clarify, this discussion and decision is just around fall sports?
Correct.
And so just, I know you spoke about a four seasons, mini seasons. So um. I just wanted to touch base on that. So will there be an overlap for kids? Cause I know that was a concern, like if my kid plays football. In March, I want to play baseball. Did they move it enough so that they're not missing that now? Are there four solid seasons?
That's going to be a smaller season. It's going to be a, a, a fall two or the fall two or the spring two, however they label this. I think they labeled it spring two, actually. That season is going to be a little bit smaller and then they push the spring back a little bit. And it's still kind of fluid. None of those dates are completely set in stone. So there might be a slight overlap of a week or two, but there are times like when. Our girls' basketball team did well. There was an overlap there and you can still count some of those practices from that season carry over to the next season.
I just wanted to make sure that was something that was accounted for. Uh, you, you sound like that the powers that be are accounted.
Normally. Normally the spring, the spring season would start March first. And they push the, the start of the spring season back almost two months to make the combinations.
Okay.
But it is going to be shorter, smaller.
Well, and, and John, would you, and again, we don't know because this, this just came down. But there's, I suppose there's the possibility that as situation develops, if, if they decide. That high-risk sports can't happen. They could end up moving the spring sport date back to its original date.
Yes, because most of those sports in the springtime are low risk besides boys lacrosse is still considered a high-risk sport.
And is there? And is there any way that you can explain a little bit what the determination was between low, mid and high? Just anything?
I can look it up, John, if you want to spitball while I find it.
Some of it has to do, I think, with like, are you playing? Are you touching the ball? Is there a lot of, a lot of interaction when you're touching shared equipment with your hands? Um, how close in proximity? Again, some of it, because volleyball. And soccer are very similar as far as being, but they rip, I think volleyball is because you're touching the ball with your hands.
Yeah. So, so it's really tied to the ability. Yeah. The ability to maintain distance, the ability to avoid contact and the ability to avoid shared equipment.
I see a question that had come up online was um availability of parents transporting two games. You know, we always typically let them. You know, come home with them, but how about, how about that as an option instead of relying on the school?
That would be something that we could consider. We, you know, obviously need to be, you know, put some policies and practices in place. Around that, but that could potentially assist. With transportation and it might be the difference between needing a second bus to transport to a single game. So, you know, we would certainly look at all options and anything that we could do to facilitate this, we would look at. And certainly, you know. There's equity issues here too, you know, that are unfortunate. You know, we've had this conversation internally. I, I very much wish that we could. Go get the kids who are at home learning during the day and get them here. I mean, I think the state freed us from that. Obligation because they know that. It's logistically impossible for schools to do that because you're talking about going, getting the kids from home. For sports at exactly the same time or very close to the time that you're getting the in-person kids home. There's just either the times conflict straight up or there's not enough time in between to clean the buses and turn back around. So. You know. That would just be a, a very realistic challenge.
Are you getting some feedback on that? I know that was one of the questions on family ID was, you know, able to be transported?
This, this is the first public discussion we've had on this is we've needed time to. To digest the guidance in the midst of the other preparations going on. So John opened up family ID. Just to start getting a sense of the numbers to help, you know, factor into the decision. John, I don't know if you've had any conversations.
And, and so it's, it's kind of, it's kind of a mixed bag. There's a handful, mainly younger kids that are having, that are saying it's going to be difficult for them to get back here. And then some of the older kids have responded that they could get back here. So it's a, it's a mixed bag. It's not, nothing definitive one way or the other.
Well, the, the transportation. For the younger kids. As long as, as long as the practices were, were pushed back to the latest. Possible time. I mean, when I played modified sport and now, and I coached basically at the modified level, parents are on the hook to get them to and from right now. So it's not. It's not something foreign to a modified sport parent to have to get them to practices and home. And two games in home. I mean, it's, it's kind of baked into having a kid with cleats. The games are. Are going to be a little bit of an issue. The, the manpower cost is the. The, the aspect, right? That's, that's what we don't know. I mean. As, as far as, you know, we, we opened the presentation with the importance of athletics to our students. And then we had 15 pages of all the reasons why we can't. And those 15 pages still, in my mind, coming from a, a, a. Family that has played athletics, coached athletics and been part of Mid Lakes Athletics for. For since they were Phelps Bulldogs. Those 15 pages of all the reasons why we can't still did not weigh the, the first page that said we have to. Because right now we're asking our seventh through 12th grade kids to not come to the building and learn via online with no hook. This is the only hook that we can offer. Yes, it's not all of them, but it's a, it's a large percentage of that play athletics. And right now we're asking they're to screen all day. And by the way, you can't play sports. I, I, I think. We uh. If, if you put it against the litmus test of what's best for kids, we move heaven and earth to make sure that we can put them in a jersey. And the manpower cost. Like I said, weighs heavily on my mind, but. There's always a cost to things that are worth it. Besides my modified girl, uh, age, girl will kill me if I go up there and tell her I said that we can't play modified sports.
What you thinking Jake?
Yeah, um. But um, I'm really conflicted on the whole thing. You know, and, and I hear what Ryan says and absolutely respect what he, what he does, but I don't know if I'm willing to move heaven and earth for this.
Well, it was for dramatic effect, Jake, you know what I mean?
No, I do understand what you mean, Ryan. Um, you know, and, you know, and Sherry's first question about costs. Um, you know, it, it's, is legitimate. Uh, we've, we spent a lot of time talking about how we expect budget cuts to come at some point this year. And doing what we can to protect ourselves for that. You know, is, is also weighs, you know, weighs on my mind as far as um. You know, as far as our fiscal responsibility to, to the, to the school. You know, but I don't know. I'm just, I am just really conflicted, you know, you know, the large part of me wishes. That somebody else had just said that we weren't going to do sports and, and took it out of our control. Um, you know, looking at. Looking at everything that has to be done. You know, that's, you know, but I, I mean, I know John and his staff and will, will, will do it, you know, and, and will do it eagerly too. Yeah. So. You know, and, and Mike and his staff, you know, I mean, we'll, we'll do what they can, but to um. To, to uh. You know, you know, and maybe, but maybe, maybe it's not what's best for students. I, I really don't know. You know, that, you know, because we, you know, we also don't know how well school is going right now and how much time and attention that's going to, that's going to take. You know, and. I just completed my first day, two days of school at the school I'm teaching at and it's, and it's, and it's face to face and it's, it's, it's hard. Uh, to do everything that we have to do in between classes and to keep students separate and to um. You know, to wipe down, keep, keep students separate in the halls, to wipe down tables in between uh every class, uh to have half my students in front of me and, and half, you know. Remote. I mean, teaching, teaching is hard right now. And if that's, and if that's what kids have to focus on right now, um, you know, I, it's. You know, it, it sucks. Um, you know, I didn't play sport. I mean, I played sports in high school and stuff, not nearly as, as well as, as you, as Ryan and others did, but you know, but, but still.
I just played well.
You know, and my kids played. I mean, you know, I absolutely, you know, my kids played mythic sports, um, you know, and, and got a lot out of it. Uh, and so, so I certainly want that opportunity for everybody. Um, but we don't, we don't live in normal times right now. Um, you know, and focusing on our core mission may take precedence right now. I know the, the first slide says sports serves our, our core mission pretty, pretty hardcore, but um. You know, but, but, you know, but. The kid's got to learn too. And if, and if that's. And, and our, and we, you know, and we can't hire a bunch of our staff to support additional cleaning responsibilities. And, and really, you know, how much above and beyond can we expect our staff to go? You know, I, I really, and, and all these, these are all worries too, really. I mean, I just, I don't know. Um, and that, and that's the biggest hardship in all this. We just don't know what's, what's, and we don't know what's coming. Uh, we don't know what's coming as far as budget cuts, cuts go. We don't know what's coming as far as whether COVID gets better or worse. You know, we, we don't, we don't know these things. Um, and so we're, and like Amber said, we're all trying to decide at the same time, you know, and if we had some more time to, to think this out, that would certainly be helpful too.
Hey, John, to, to Jake's point with the, the. Asking of the staff to, to clean more, how much support could we expect or? How much support could they give from the boosters to help out with it? Because really, when you're talking about cleaning stuff, the, the, the sports, what we're talking about are country, are, are cross-country. Golf, soccer, tennis and, and swimming, right? Am I missing any of them? So we're not cleaning a cross-country course. We're not cleaning a tennis uh court. Cause that's outside. Um, you know, you got to wipe down the benches at the soccer field. So really we're talking about the pool. So I mean, I, I guess, is it unrealistic to think that soccer boosters could help wipe down balls? I mean, the, the concession stands are, are going to be a thing. It's just not, it's not feasible to, to try.
I mean, but the thing, the cleaning would be the balls and things like that, which I could get the coaches to do. Some of it as far as like asking people that aren't employed by the district, the coaches are employed by the district. So it, there's a little bit more that we could extend for them to do.
Right.
Asking a, a, a member from the community. I know they, I know this community is awesome and they would jump in in a heartbeat, but I don't know the legality behind. Asking a, a, a community member to use a disinfecting machine to disinfect something.
That's what I was, that's what I was getting at with the question.
Yeah, it, it, given all the restrictions and, and certainly Mike can chime in on this. Engaging non-employees in that type of activity could be problematic.
Okay.
And don't get my earlier comment wrong either. I don't see necessarily that we can't. Take care of cleaning for the fall sports. My bigger concern is. Honestly, is winter sports. I mean, I realize we're talking fall sports primarily right now, but one leads to the other. And that's my bigger concern because then everything's indoors. But and, and we'll also have a better, better handle on what exactly. Our capabilities are then to how many grade levels we'll have back. And what the staff is capable of.
I mean, we're, we're certainly open to all options, but we got to make sure we look at what's best for the district too.
Just want to make sure to keep everybody safe.
So at this point in time, I, I mean, everything you said, Jake, is kind of where I'm at. I'm on the fence, you know, I would love to have sports and have everybody be able to go and purchase. Participate in everything, but I'm really worried about the cost and, and, and. Logistically, you know, where are we going to be at right now with the opening of school come next week? I mean, how is that going to go? Where are we all, you know? Going to be at? And that is really like the most important thing right now. So I'm on the fence and unfortunately I also have to go, so I'm sorry that I have to leave early. Um, but I do need to go for the night. But I'll definitely see you guys on Monday.
Thanks, Sherry.
Thanks, Sherry.
I mean, I, I have my budget, my fall budget all on a spreadsheet, so I, I can pull that first thing in the morning and get that to Tracy. And have her put something together as far as what we normally have done on my end for, for the fall season.
Yes. Outside of that would be the. A guesstimate as to what the over and above would be, right?
So I'm kind of thinking in my head, um, as this discussion is going, how comfortable and where am I at with spectators? And turning people away and how that's going to happen and. I just keep going back to, I, I just want this to be more of a positive experience than negative for everybody involved in, in. I just don't know, like Jake, I, I don't know if we're going to be clear on that before we have to make a decision. And I'm also kind of wondering where Todd's at. What do you think, Mr. Free Love? And Mr. Murphy, we haven't heard much from you either. Where are you guys at?
So I, I was going to say a couple of things, you know, obviously right now we're talking about the low-risk sports, right? That's the first thing that we're, we're looking at. So. That's supposed to be the easiest, um, right? So kind of what Mike was saying, it's going to get harder from here on out. So. You know, maybe that's a reason to, to give this a shot, to see how things are going to go. Because if we don't give this a start. Then there's no discussion around high-risk sports or any of the other things that are going to come later. Um, and the other question I had, I know cost obviously is a big factor. Clearly we've budgeted for a whole season of sports. You know, full-time. We're talking shortened seasons. So is, is there some different costs associated with a shortened season when it comes to coaches, some other factors that come into this? That maybe can account for some of those other added expenses?
That would be subject to collective bargaining, so I can't speak to that. Um, but that would have to be worked out.
There would be game day costs that would be different. Like so normally we would do 16 games. So there'd be four extra games that would have some wiggle room there as far as vouchers for referees. Things like that.
The, the cost probably and, and, and to Jake and some other people's points too is. By comparison to a, another fall season. The cost may not be that much more. The more relevant consideration might be the cost in comparison to anticipated. Reductions in state aid that could be coming in short order. So it, it, it's difficult. There, there's so many things going on all at once right now and I anticipate that. On Monday, we'll also be having a preliminary. Conversation about the impending. Budget issue and you know, the governor continues to make reference to a potential 20%. Reduction in state aid across the board. We've already, the state has already withheld 20% from the first two smaller aid payments of the year. Um, so we've already seen decreased revenues. That's just a re- Um, so we've already seen decreased revenues, that's just a reality, so it, it. It's difficult to do a season-to-season comparison and it, it's probably more relevant. To think about that in terms of the context of the overall financial situation.
So Matt, if you don't mind, if I could have a quick second just to add my piece. Well, I, I think it's pretty obvious that the people that have written this guideline, some of them probably didn't play sports. You know, the, one of the first comments that came up in regards to the unable to tolerate. I mean, I think we'll be a couple of hours into the first practice and we'll be trying to figure out exactly what does. I can't tolerate my, my face mask, not what that really means, I think that's gonna be really, really hard to define as.
I, I think it'll be more like a few minutes.
Right, right, um, you know, I, I'll back up too and just thank John and Mike and Tracy and. You know, all the people that have been putting so much time into this, I, I can't even fathom, oh my gosh, what you guys have been going through and just. Today, these are the guidelines, tomorrow, these are the guidelines and so on and so forth, but to be able to be in, on a field. And be six feet apart from somebody, but when you're in phys ed, you have to be twelve feet apart, I'm just so confused on these guidelines. And I don't know how anybody, this district or the next district, how you really do, want this group of people to decide. I mean, it's obvious that the spring sports in two thousand nineteen didn't happen and the outcome was detrimental to some of these kids that. Didn't get to play their senior year or, you know, and, and I just. There's just not enough information that's out there for us to be able to really make a decision, you know, I hear about the. Social emotional piece, well, what about all those elementary students? Or how, what, what, what sports are they going to play, you know, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, or excuse me, fourth, fifth and sixth, they're not gonna be on campus, they're not gonna get a true. Phys ed type of, you know, thing for the day, so I just. I'm, you know, I, I'll be honest, I, I went to college to play sports. I love sports, but I just don't, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with, uh, the, the direction that we've got from the state. Again, not from the people on this screen, you guys have done a phenomenal job with a little bit of direction that you've been given. But, uh, I don't think the state's done a great job to be able to give us enough detail to make a, an educated choice. That's, that's all I really have, you know, again, I, I wanna reiterate, you guys have done a phenomenal job, but. Um, we need a lot more direction, uh, to be able to make a, a decision.
First of all, thank you, Todd, and, um, a, a credit again to the team and just. It, it's, it's been a roller coaster throughout this whole process, there's new challenges every day and, and, and the team has done a great job, so thank you for recognizing. As far as more information, I gotta be honest, I don't think, there's no more information coming. Um, public high school athletic association has, um, given us what they're gonna give us. They've clarified that, um, section five, you know, is basically deferring. To the public high school guidance, um, we've inquired as, you know, clarification of the tolerating of a mask. And, and different things like that and, uh. We, I truly, I mean, they've been pretty unequivocal, we, we've been given as much information and as much guidance as we're gonna be given. And like I had said earlier. Section five would prefer answers from all districts tomorrow, and we've told them that's, that just can't happen. You know, that, that's one week with the guidance, not even a week, because you can't count the Friday that it came out. Because it came out eight o'clock on Friday night of Labor Day weekend, and we've all been focused on welcoming back staff and. Other districts have been bringing kids back and, you know, we've been pulled in eighteen different directions, trying to decipher this. This guidance, um, that it's as specific as it's going to get and. You're all right, you've all identified, the timing of this is challenging to say the least. Um, and, and we, we, there's just not a lot of time to make a decision, but. By Monday night, a decision will have to be made.
So I'm, I'm, you know, with Todd and Ryan and everyone, I, I very much value sports, um, I've, I've always been an athlete. My entire life, continue to consider myself an athlete, um, and I'm very concerned about the social emotional well-being of our children and I. I understand the huge role that, that play, that athletics play, um, in social emotional health. But I am very seriously concerned about the financial piece of this. So I think if we can kind of see some projected or anticipated numbers. Somehow, and I know that there's the specific specificity and the accuracy of that is. Anyone's guess of what will actually end up being, but, um. Just considering what's probably coming down the pike for our financial. Situation, I, I. I'm not su- I'm not sure if we can support it or not, I don't know.
I, I will say this, and, and again, I anticipate. You know, having and also including in Monday's board meeting, an initial public discussion of the board of, of. The impending financial situation now. It, it's a complicated one, you know, all, all signs, all public signs are not good. The governor continues to reference significant deep cuts to state aid, especially if a federal stimulus package isn't passed. And that seemingly is increasingly unlikely, um, and maybe too little, too late if it does come. But all that considered, and we, and we can present, we'll decide which order we wanna have these conversations on Monday. But I just put it out there, I think in Tracy can. Contradict their ad as she wishes, but I don't think we could describe the, the forecasted financial situation as anything other than grim. Based upon the information that, that's been coming to us, and again. We've already had about four hundred thousand dollars worth of aid payments withheld to date. And that's coupled with increased costs. Adding back a nurse position and a custodial position that had not been included in the budget to support reopening. Um, on top of the massive purchasing of PPE, um, and other supplies to support the reopening. Though, th- those increased costs and that loss of aid add up, you know, it's, it's September tenth and they add up to a significant shortfall. So that's why I said that the fall of twenty twenty to fall of twenty nineteen comparison. Is much less relevant to the fall of twenty within the context. Of the September twenty twenty financial picture, that, that's probably the more relevant consideration. And I, I hate to put it that way because I want badly for. All the reasons that everybody has identified to give these opportunities to our students, because they've lost so much already. And for, again, social, emotional, all the things that everybody's talked about, and, and there is a reason I put that first slide up there. Okay, um, cause we have to acknowledge the role that athle- athletics play for our students. Th- this is, is, you know, one of those very difficult decisions, and I say one, because there's gonna be a lot of difficult decisions ahead of us. Um, in the coming year or years, John?
I'm putting myself out there a little bit by saying this, but I have to, it's, I've gotta advocate for the kids a little bit.
Absolutely.
Is. My budget is a drop in the bucket overall compared to the whole school budget, and it's one of the areas that you get the most for the money that you put into it. And I, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that.
No, and that's, it, I'll back you up with numbers, John, it's one point three six percent of the overall budget for the school. The entire athletic program, not just fall.
I, I hundred, I, I get where we're coming from with this, the budget looming in the background, but I, I just. As much as we, the ath- the student athletes get out of what comes out of the athletic budget is, you get back three hundred percent.
So that's good to hear, and that's why I can, I'm kinda curious to see the numbers, because, because I don't, I don't have a good concept of. You know, if, if not having fall sports is gonna save ten teaching positions down the road. Then, then that's one thing, if it's gonna save a half of a teaching position, that's a different thing, so that's, I, I just wanna have a better understanding of the.
The, the, the total athletic budget about five hundred thousand?
That's correct, yep. So John, I think has a number for just the fall sports for all this, if we played all the fall sports regular season.
I've got my spreadsheet. About minus transportation, cause I don't know what transportation costs are, and what the cleaning cost is gonna be is roughly about a hundred and fifteen thousand for the. Is what a normal fall season costs, a hundred and fifteen thousand, and it's usually one of the higher ends, because we have the most sports in the fall.
John, how many kids are you talking?
In the, in a normal fall without a pandemic, we usually have about three hundred and forty-eight kids participate in fall athletics. That's usually, that's about sixty percent of our student population, if not more.
But, so, you know, all three levels of volleyball, all levels of football and cheerleading have been pushed. And, and those are, they're postponed and questionable.
Even in March.
That eliminates, that eliminates the money question, I think, in my mind right now.
What's that?
I think that eliminates the money question in my mind right now, kick it down the, down the road, you know, to the next season, but right now. If you're, you're talking pennies on the dollar, just to give this a shot.
And my other thought is, it, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be all or nothing, um, and I, I'm going back and forth about this too. Is it that we do just varsity or do we do all modified JV and varsity? So, um.
I guess my question would be, what would be the reasons why we, if we're, if we go with the decision to provide it? I would wanna know the reasons why we wouldn't be able to provide it all the way, right? So. That would have to be something that would, you'd have to sell me on, like, because if we're gonna, if we're gonna open it up, I don't, I would wanna open it up. To who we usually open it up to.
Right, and I think it, some of it goes back to like, you know, soccer fields, do we have enough soccer fields to get all the practices in for all three levels? Do we have enough time in the day before it gets dark? Are there?
We have, so, I mean, we have a lot, we have a lot of green space.
Absolutely.
I, I, I think whether it currently is called a soccer field or not.
Or not, they can practice on it, right?
John, I mean, would you disagree with that?
No, I mean, that, we have a practice football field out back that we could use too, so.
We have other spaces that we could line, that's definitely.
Yeah, I think like Tracy said, as soon as you can give us, I know it's hard, but if you can give us some numbers or. A place where we can kind of balance some of this stuff, it may, it's, it's still not very.
Yeah, I mean, like Matt, it, it, Matt made a couple of important points, one was. If you don't try low-risk sports, then you're really sort of making the decision for the whole year, valid point. Um, and, you know, again, the entire athletic budget is one point three six percent, so that, keep that in mind. Um, we will dive in and provide you as much concrete financial information as we can, but until we. Here's the, and again, this goes back to not knowing what sequence the section league and individual decisions are gonna happen in. Because the number, a lot of these dollar figures are going to be dependent upon the number of competitions per sport. Which are gonna be dependent upon how many, what other districts do. You know, you know, how many other districts offer varsity, JV, modified, that's gonna, you know, if. If the norm or the average decision in our area is to not offer modified. Then that's gonna cut down potentially on the number of modified competitions, which is gonna have some impact, you know, on the cost, not huge swings, but. So, some differences, so some of that, if, you know, we'll, we'll base it upon an assumption of a certain number of contests. And, and we won't know until after we've made the decision how accurate those numbers are, but. I don't think they would be way off.
Yeah, you know, we could be conservative in our estimating, uh, and then, you know, obviously estimate for the, the max. And then it would give you an idea what that number would be, and below that would be in the ballpark if we were to have less number of contests. Or less number of trips or, um, different levels.
John, I had a quick, a quick question on, oh, go ahead, sorry, Tracy.
No, no, I was just saying, we can break it down pretty deep, if you, if you wanna see it to that level, then you could just get an idea. Of if we go this way, this is what it would cost.
Right, question, John, with, um, the, the hundred, was it a hundred and fifteen for the fall? Is that what, is that what you said?
That, that, I just, I have it on a spreadsheet, so I just, I took it real quick while trying not to look like I was doing other things at the same time on here. Uh, so it's, it's roughly a hundred fifty, I would say, give or take a thousand dollars.
But that's, that would be.
That's without transportation, because.
And, but that would also.
Turn to the transportation part of the budget.
Right, but that would also be with all the sports, that's including football, volleyball, blah, 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 so it's actually the numbers less, I mean, cause, you know. Yes, the kids are less, but the, that budget number's less too, so.
And honestly, I could probably save a little bit of money as far, I mean, it's pennies, but we're only gonna have maybe two spectators per, per. Per student, I wouldn't have to have as many supervisors on, because the crowd would be smaller, I mean. Or if we did no spectators, then maybe no spectators probably, I would have to, if we did spectators, we'd have to have more people on to make sure that they were following the two spectator limit. So, that, never mind, that's probably wash, I'm thinking on the fly.
Yeah, that, I don't think that's gonna tip it. Oh, oh, you know, a lot, one way or the other.
And outside of that, John, I, I wanna, I wanna thank you for the, I wanna advocate for my kids line. Uh, that, it, it teed up the, uh, the question that I was about to ask Matt, that he was able to answer before I asked it. On the, the percentage of the budget, and I, I, I can't thank you enough. For, for saying that, cause I think it's important to, to put the context out there.
Anytime, that's, that's why, I mean, I, I'm, I'm passionate about what I do, I'm passionate about these kids here at Mid Lakes and. Maybe at some point, I'll show you some outtakes of a crazy video that is, it's still on the cutting room floor, because of the way this craziness unfolded, that I wasn't able to post. Because of the guidance.
Oh, it's not dead yet, John. I've seen it, it's pretty spectacular.
So a question I had written down from, this is way back in the presentation, doesn't really have much to do with what we're talking about now, but the, there, so it, you know, they talk about in the guidelines that. Spectators have to fill out some sort of form, like we all do when we go to work, how would that, is that something that can even be?
It, it says you can, you can encourage it, but you can't require it of.
Right, but I mean, how would you even, how would you even encourage that, or how would you make it, would you put like a, a link to something on your website?
I guess you would, yeah, make.
How do you manage that?
Right, and that's, I think, why they encouraged it and didn't require it, and, and say you can't require it, like, you can't. We, we couldn't, I think the guidance is written that you can't say to a spectator, you didn't fill this out.
Right.
John, am I misquoting, it's, it's like that, right?
You can suggest it, but it's not required.
Your own staff, your own student athletes, the officials, you know, they have to do it. But spectators, you can only suggest.
And, and some of that, I'm thinking they're looking at, a lot of these people that write some of this guidance come from bigger districts where they charge at the gate and things like that. So I can see them having somebody there as the people are coming through the gate, asking those questions.
Right.
Just like when you go to the hospital, that there's somebody at the door waiting for you to, and they ask you, they take your temperature and they ask you those questions as you walk through the door.
Well, that's, the only thing I can imagine is we post somebody at the parking lot and scan everybody that comes in.
Yeah, that, that would be problematic.
Right, right, so.
No, I, I think what it, what it does is it ju- it just makes the social distancing. No, I I think what it, what it does is it ju- it just makes the social distancing and face coverings for spectators that might
That's fair, I wanted to circle back, you know, we talked a lot about cost in this, um, but to me, cost isn't much of a factor, it's back to the safety. So I don't think we talked about that as much from a, from a student athlete perspective. So even though these are low-risk sports, you know, soccer, you know, can be questionable when it comes to that, but I think still we need to circle back and talk a little more about the safety of the kids. Um, you know, we don't, we don't have a representation, might have been, might be something considered maybe for Monday is, you know, maybe the, maybe the doctor, maybe one of our health experts that might chime in on that a little bit more.
I, yeah, and and ba- based on the information that's been shared, you know, our, our Bosie Diaz has been in on regional task force meetings for the total reopening of the region and there's medical personnel and representatives there. And, you know, a lot of questions have been asked, trying to make sense of this guidance, you know, why this decision was made, you know, and the out, the outdoor sports, the the movement, the running around, those are all actually benefits. Quite honestly, the spectators standing too close to each other, talking to each other without face coverings, probably creates more of a risk for them than our our student athletes running past each other. Um, according to what's been shared with me. Um, it, e- even as we've delved deeper into the topics of contact tracing and exposures and whether people would be quarantined or isolated if there was exposure, we've learned that the questions they're gonna ask is, have you been, you know, in somebody's presence, not socially distanced, without a face mask, stationary for more than like ten minutes? So it's, that's becoming the standard, so, um, I think that's some of the rationale into why the outdoor lower contact sports have been approved um, is based upon that science and and it's people being stationary in close proximity that we're concerned about. Whi- which is why they say the subs on the sideline have to wear masks, have to be six feet apart. Whereas there is quite a bit of gray area and flexibility for the, the active athletes themselves.
Okay, um, I didn't, I didn't know if we wanted to kind of close this up, or are there any more questions, concerns? You wanna bring to the table before we adjourn?
So, so just so we know what our homework is. So dig into the financials a little bit more. Um, just to kind of, on on the conservative side of things. What else can we provide you?
I think like Matt said, um, just if there is some medical scientific something that can help sway me one way or the other as far as the safety of our students and the health, um, just if there's any way we can get a little more information on that.
Um, I'll see if somebody is available, or at the very least, I can try to get a statement or
That's, yeah, it's short notice for them as well.
Just, just spitballing a little bit, um, you know, there was, there's a lot of talk about not including modified. Um, you know, I don't know if we agreed with that or not, I, you know, I don't, I don't know if if that's, is is that a decision or not? Um, but just some sort of scenario, you know, a low, medium, high scenario, um, you know, or recommendations on different scenarios, like, we definitely can't bring everybody back. Um, this is the most we think we could do, and this is the minimal that would benefit the most, I don't know, um. Just, just guessing as as to what might be useful for us.
Anything else? Well, thank you so much, um, for all your hard work and I I mean, this was quite a rich conversation, so thank you for participating in that. Um, if there's nothing else, I'd like to move on to, uh, adjournment, um, may I have a motion to adjourn? And executive session, can I do that together or do I need to?
Yeah, that's one motion.
Okay, may I have an emotion, may I have a motion for adjournment and then and to enter into executive session?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Hi, any post? Okay, motion approved, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you, team, for for taking time out of your night to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.